We're just waiting on seven o'clock.[2.45][2.45](laughter) Good evening, at this time we'll call the October 6, 2015, meeting of the Yukon City Council to order if you would rise for the invocation by Gary Reynolds of the First Christian Church of Nazarene, please, remain standing for the flag.
Let's pray. Dear God, we thank you for this day that you have given to us and we thank you for this opportunity that we have to come before you and pray for wisdom and guidance. We thank you, God, for our city council and for the citizens that live in Yukon, we pray that you would just continue to guide and direct in their lives and help us as we live together in a community to do the best that we can. We ask for your guidance and direction, we thank you, God, amen.
Amen.
I pledge the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation for God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call the roll, please. Alberts?
Here.
Russell?
Here.
McCarron?
Here.
Smystrilla?
Here.
Yanda?
Here.
Before we begin the agenda this evening, we have two items that are on the agenda that several of you are here to talk with us about and the procedure is that we have a sheet at the back on the table, behind the gentleman in the blue coat, underneath the clock, and if you wish to talk to us about an item that is on the agenda, we would ask that you would fill that up and bring it up to the clerk, just so we can recognize you. When you come to the podium, you'll have an opportunity to speak, you can speak about the matter that you would like to address the council about, we ask that you would limit your comments to three minutes. So if you have a big, long, as you can see, there's a lot of people here, as the time passes and we have three or four people, we would ask that your comments not be redundant. If one person has made your points, please line those off of your list and only make those points that would be relevant, there's no reason for us to hear them a second time. That does not mean that we're not concerned about what every person has to say and if we need to be here until midnight, we'll do that, but I hope that we can get out a lot quicker. And at the end of the night, we're going to resolve a couple of issues and our community's going to go forward and we're going to be just as awesome as we were before, okay? I look forward to it. All right, presentations and proclamations, fire presentation week, do I have some representatives from the Yukon Fire Department? All right, chief. Proclamation this evening, whereas the city of Yukon is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting our city, whereas we recognize that fire is a great concern, we also recognize that homes are the location where people are at great risk of fire, whereas half of all homes, fire death results from fires reported at night between 11:00 PM and 7:00 AM, whereas most people are asleep. Whereas residents should install smoke alarms in every sleeping room, outside of each separate sleeping area and on every level of the home and have a fire escape plan. Now therefore I, John Alberts, Mayor of the City of Yukon, do hereby proclaim October the 4th through the 10th, 2015, as Fire Prevention Week, under my hand and seal, John Alberts, Mayor of Yukon. Chief, if you would let us know about Fire Prevention Week and your concerns and ideas?
Sure, John, thank you so much, Mayor. This week, of course, we're focusing on the schools, so a lot of you have young children or grandchildren, we'll be seeing them this week in the school and teaching them all about fire safety, but also if you have elderly people, check with them, make sure their smoke detectors work, and if you can't do that, give us a call, we'll check them for them, we can change them out, change their batteries, anything that you need to help you be safe, so we would just really urge you to check those because it's like the proclamation says, middle of the night is the most dangerous time for fire, so, anyway, that's it.
Thank you, sir. (applause)
Several weeks ago, the council sought fit to honor the memory of our first emergency management director, Frosty Pete, by naming the Emergency Operations Center at our police department for Frosty. What we, we passed a proclamation designating that room to be called that from now on. Mayor Alberts is holding, in fact, that resolution acknowledging that we wanted you, Terry, to have that with, as part for your home, if you would. I would like to read a replica of the plaque that is going to be hanging outside the door of the Emergency Operations Center, if you would please. Frosty Oliver Frosty Pete was the first emergency management director for the city of Yukon, served the city for ten years. Frosty's experience from disasters such as the Mar-a-Lago bombing and the 1999 Moore tornado helped him reshape emergency management in Oklahoma. Thanks to Frosty, Yukon was one of the first cities in Oklahoma with an independent emergency management department. It was through his encouragement that an Emergency Operations Center, which is capable of withstanding an F-5 tornado, was built in the heart of Yukon. He loved people, teasing and encouraging others. Frosty taught us the value of each day and to be a friend to all. Dedicated, August 18th, 2015. Terry.
you are here, if you brought your forms up, then we'll be ready to take care of those. But the next item on the agenda is the visitors' section, that's the section for people that don't want to talk about any item that is on the agenda. So if someone is here tonight and has the courage to come in front of all these people and share your concern, we'd love to have you, so, anyone would like to address the council about a non-agended item? Okay, thank you, then we will proceed. At this time, we'll recess as the Yukon City Council and we will reconvene as the Yukon Municipal Authority. The first item is item 1A, and that's the consent docket. This item is placed on the agenda so the Yukon Municipal Authority, by unanimous consent, can designate those routine items that wish to be approved by one motion. If an item does not meet with the approval of all authority members, that item will be heard in regular order. The city manager recommends a motion to approve A, the minutes of the regular meeting of September the 15th, 2015. That's it, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Discussion, call the roll, please. Yanda?
Yes.
Smystrilla?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
At this time, we'll adjourn as YMA and reconvene as the Yukon City Council. The first item on that agenda is the consent docket, this item is placed on the agenda so the Yukon City Council, by unanimous consent, can designate those routine items that wish to be approved on one motion. If an item does not meet with the approval of all council members, that item will be heard in regular order. The city manager recommends a motion that will approve A, the minutes of the regular meeting of September the 15th, 2015, B, the payment of material claims in the amount of $1,332,276.68, C, the resignation of Carol Novak from the library board, D, the appointment of Teddy Shells, Sales, excuse me, to the library board, E, the designation of items on the attached list from the technology department as surplus and authorize their sale, donation, or trade, and F, set the date for the next regular council meeting for October the 20th, 2015, 7:00 PM, in the council chambers of the Centennial Building on 12 South 5th Street in Yukon, Oklahoma. Do I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Discussion, call the roll, please. Alberts?
Yes.
Smystrilla?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
The next item is two, and that's reports of boards, commissions, and city officials. Mr. Taylor here is here this evening to talk to us about the planning commission, Mr. Taylor.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, I want to thank all these people coming to hear the planning commission report tonight.[623.82][623.82](laughter) I didn't know there was going to be such a large audience here. The planning commission has been busy this year, as you know, the planning commission is a recommendation body to you, you may follow our recommendation or choose to go the other way. We also have a certain duties that we can approve on our own board. Some of the activities that we've done this year is, we handled and approved seven curb cuts, one lot split, we had four conditional use permits, one planned unit development deviation, the commons, we had to change a pub there, and two re-zonings. We had one meeting where we didn't have any business and didn't have a meeting. Our preliminary plats, when I first got on to the planning commission, many times the preliminary plat and the final plat was occurring at the same night, and that to me, they would come in and they'd say, the staff would have several items that needed to be corrected, and they'd say, well, we'd correct it before we go to the city council. I said, well, let's just do away with the planning commission and just go directly to the council, so I pretty well got that stopped where the planning, the preliminary plats come on one night, we look it over, we look at, see what needs to be done, then we have them go do those items and bring it back again before the planning commission so that when you get it, all the work is done and you can do the business that you have at your hand. But this year, we did five preliminary plats, one for Salazar, one for the Walmart Neighborhood Market, one for the Bounce Academy, one for Raising Canes, and one for Red Rock Commercial Center Edition, and we had six final plats, one for Frisco Ridge, a replat of a final for Legacy Lakes, the Walmart Neighborhood Market final plat, Bounce Academy, Raising Canes, and the Red Rock Commercial Center section. And you have all received those. We tabled, but we followed through the next month, the final plat for the Bounce Academy, and one rezoning on the Bounce Academy, and we denied one rezoning request, which I believe you upheld also on the denial. Do you have any questions for me on the planning commission? We meet as needed and we hope we're doing the work that you would have us to do and do.
Terry, you might recognize any of the planning commission that are here with you this evening, or call their name even if they're not in attendance.
Okay, we have, Bill Baker is one of our planning commissioners. Caught me off guard.
Sorry.
Robert Davis, Ed Hatley, and myself, and we are looking into, I believe the staff is looking into the fifth member, from Mr. Russell's ward. By the way, I have a name for you if you still are looking for one. Anything else? I've enjoyed my time on the planning commission and hope we're doing the work of the city as you would have us do it. Any questions?
Questions? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Larry.
Thank you, Larry.[839.79][839.79](applause)
The next item is item three, and that's consider approving a financing plan for acquisition, construction, equipping, and renovation of facility for use by Spanish Cove Housing Authority or its designee through issuance of tax-exempt and/or taxable revenue bonds or notes in an amount not to exceed $42 million. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, so we will take up discussion, and the way that I would like to handle it this evening is, is I think that we will go the citizens, and then the Cove, and then the council. So if there are citizens that have turned in, so we'll go down, Charles Schwartz, Charles, would you like to address the council?
I didn't expect to be first.
Want to sit down and I'll put you at the end?[913.00][913.00](laughter)
Mr. Mayor, councilman, I wish to speak in favor of the expansion project which will re-
Mr. Schwartz, we need you to state your address for the record, please.
Yes, 113 Choctaw Place.
Sorry.
Yukon, yes.
Thank you.
I wish to speak in favor of the project which will reposition Spanish Cove as we move forward into the future. I moved to Spanish Cove about 18 months ago, I wish to be near my grandchildren and to have my health needs taken care of and not be a burden to my children. Many of my elderly friends, you call us baby boomers and millennials, are seeking a place like Spanish Cove and wish to remain in Yukon. Spanish Cove needs in the area of nursing care, assisted living, mental health needs, and a tornado shelter at the south area are well documented and seem to have wide approval. Now for phase two, 50 housing units with underground parking doubles as a tornado shelter and a new activity shelter. Remember the Moore tornado recently? They had 18 minutes warning. A tornado shelter at the north end of this project would be a big help. Most of the residents use walkers and canes, and the thought of a mad 100-yard dash to the south end, a tornado shelter would overwhelm everyone. I actually believe that there will be room for our neighbors in these tornado shelters. The activity center is too small and not functional. The residents have to frequently go to the Dale Robertson Center, and we often go to the exercise room and it is full and discourages us from coming back. The general meeting room is packed, just like this council room. The phase one and phase two net revenues will be necessary to pay for the tornado shelters and the activity center. Last of all, I want to address the trustees of Spanish Cove. They have been selected by a committee which included the mayors of Yukon. Mayor Alberts, Mayor Smith are the most recent, Erling Smystrilla has also been a former mayor. I'm especially proud of Larry Taylor, last appointed by Mayor Alberts as the council appointee, who has served as a council representative for over 20 years. I know these trustees personally and I trust their judgment. The former mayors also trusted their judgment. Let them make Spanish Cove the best retirement center in the country.
Thank you, sir. Questions? Pat Snyder? Mr. Snyder, if you give your name and your address, please.
I am Pat Snyder, I live at 110 Choctaw Place in Yukon, which is in the Spanish Cove community. I've been there six years. Snyder's had grocery stores here in town for over 50 years, and the one thing that we learned from that was that you have to reposition, you have to reinvest, you have to go forward, and this plan for Spanish Cove does that for us and will keep us in the community. The people on our board are very intelligent and they realize this and they solicited the help of experts, and the experts had an excellent track rating, and they have worked for months on this plan. It is, going forward, it has been approved by the board, and I just wanted you to know that I give it 100% of my support, and I'm here tonight to ask you for yours.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Debbie Miller?
12350 J.C. Circle, Midwest City, Oklahoma. I've been employed at Spanish Cove for the past 24 years as the Director of Wellness and Resident Relations. Over that time, I've seen a lot of changes at the Cove and in the industry. Change is hard for everyone. When we built the pavilion, there was resistance from residents who were afraid of change and the cost. They said we would never fill it, we did. That same year, the pavilion won the Leading Age Best Practice Award for offering private rooms. That wasn't done at that time. We were ahead of the trend. Most facilities have private rooms now. Some residents said the Plaza Concourse, which was our old health center, would never get used, it's overused. This is the hub of our wellness program. The building was built and designed to be a nursing home with independent dining. It is over 30 years old. The building is rundown and not medically or functionally useful. It was never designed to be a wellness center. Plaza Hall, which was originally designed as the independent dining room, is our only large meeting room. It is too small to accommodate all of our residents, and many don't come to the events because it is just too crowded. We can't invite family, or friends, or the Yukon community to events because there is simply no room. The hot topic and biggest trend in retirement communities is wellness. Seniors are choosing retirement communities solely on their wellness programs and the amenities because they keep independent seniors active, engaged, and out of assisted livings and nursing homes. Our exercise room is too small, it wasn't designed for senior fitness. There are safety hazards when exercising in a room with inadequate space and resources. For example, we recently had a resident fall in our line dance class because it was so crowded, they tripped over each other. The fitness center where our strength and cardio equipment is located, it's too crowded, we can't put walkers or scooters in there. The equipment is so crammed in, the room isn't functional, because it was never designed to be a fitness center. It is not the standard to which baby boomers are accustomed or what they will want or demand as they look at new innovative retirement communities. I was a member of every long-range planning committee we have had at Spanish Cove. The vision statement that we adopted years ago reads, "To be a caring, innovative, and respected retirement community, recognized as outstanding by seniors, residents, employees, the industry, and the public, to be the standard by which other retirement communities are measured." I believe we have done this, but we are falling behind now. We have outstanding programs and have won best practice awards, but it's becoming harder due to outdated facilities and resources. To be a model community in wellness, there is a critical need for expanded facilities to meet the needs and wishes of residents and future seniors. Our wellness facility isn't state-of-the-art, it isn't the standard, it is overcrowded, tired, and desperate need of a new plan. I would urge the city council to vote yes to our expansion plans and to remember the critical nature of the transition plans as contained in the proposal, so that we can be the standard of other retirement communities. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Vida Johnson?
Belta Johnston, 1302 Redbud, I entered a what, with a name like mine, it's whatever's leftover, so.
They're dollar glasses, I didn't see, I thought it was-
That's all right. I do thank you all, did you get my address? Okay, I thank you very much for the opportunity to address you regarding the request of Spanish Cove to proceed with the plans for the repositioning project which has been brought before you. I have been a resident of Spanish Cove for almost four years. I have been a member of the building committee from the very beginning of the process. I serve on the finance committee, the policy committee, and am currently serving as president of town hall at Spanish Cove. I can truly say that my decision to move to Spanish Cove has been one of the very best decisions I have ever made. That said, I believe very strongly in the initial plan which was put forth because it is my desire to secure the future of the Cove by providing an environment which will attract new residents. We are all acutely aware of the changes that are taking place all around us. Just this past week, I received a mailing from Whispering Creek, quote, "A gated retirement neighborhood for active adults conveniently located between Mustang and South Oklahoma City on County Lion Road," end of quote. This is the cohort from which we need to be recruiting to Spanish Cove, and the amenities of other retirement communities, what they have, Spanish Cove will not be given a second chance if we don't have those. While the expansion of the pavilion is critically important, we do not want that to become our defining aspect of the Cove. We must continue to offer well-rounded lifestyle choices which will appeal to all aspects of retirement community. Whispering Creek offers all kinds of things, they have the activities, the socials, the fitness center, they even have ponds and waterfalls. We're not going to have that, but what we offer is life care. I truly believe that the safeguarding of the life care option is critical to the continuing health of Spanish Cove. If you are not aware of the life care option, it is, in a very brief synopsis, a commitment to take care of me for the remainder of my life in whatever state of health I may be, at the same rate of pay that I would be charged if I continued to live independently in my apartment. Currently, that is about $2,384 as a single person in independent living versus $4,540 per month in assisted living and $8,486 in nursing long-term care. The caveat, however, is that I had to make that decision before I became incapacitated. I know that by having come into Spanish Cove, while I am still healthy and active, I have made the decision to live my remaining years with a sense of security that I will be taken care of and will not be a burden to my family members. The one thing I didn't have is, I've made a plan so far about storms, just please sing, and I'll fly away at my funeral till we get those storm shelters in. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Clarence Drew Miller? Name and address, please.
My name is Clarence Drew Miller, I live at 1503 South Hornwell Drive, Apartment 204 in Yukon. I've been a resident of Spanish Cove for over 10 years, I've served as trustee for five years, and chairman of the Board of Trustees for three years. I think you all are aware of the need for the repositioning project and the minority opposition. I also think you remember the very intense and vocal opposition to the construction of the pavilion building. If the opposition had prevailed then, we would not be the premier CCRC in this great state. We must think to the future and have facilities for the next generation, or we will slowly fade in the face of new senior living communities coming all around us. I urge you to approve our request, authorize debt up to $42 million. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Walter Tony? Name and address, please, sir.
My name is, my name is Walter Tony. My wife and I reside at 2 East Janus, Apartment 103 on the Yukon campus, independent living. We've been there for over 10 years. What I want to speak to you about is the opposition to the expansion as is so stated at Spanish Cove. With that will come an increased health risk, inconvenience, and an increase in monthly fees for the elderly residents of Spanish Cove. The original proposal states that the monthly fee increase will be held at 3% per annum. The facts are, in the 10-plus years that my wife and I have lived at Spanish Cove, we have experienced a 3% increase only two times, and that was in better times than they are now. The facilities and the- and the quote overcrowding were existent when we moved there. We've enjoyed them. We've used them. Now there's less crowding than there was before because there are less people living at Spanish Cove. The population is down. I have witnessed the management performance of the decision-makers at Spanish Cove. Each costly project was proposed to increase revenue. There have been more than five such ventures with a cost of over two million dollars of residents' money, and things are worse now than they were before. Each thing that was done was to improve curb appeal, to bring new people in, and it wasn't done. To date, there has not been a performance record, a profit-loss ledger shown or disclosed. And Spanish Cove still has a historically low occupancy rate. I ask that you examine the performance of the decision-makers at Spanish Cove and make your decision based on the most important element at Spanish Cove, the residents. I hope your voice will be a calm voice of reason. I thank you for the opportunity to address the council.
Thank you, sir. That's all we have as far as residents that want to address the Cove. Is there anyone that we've overlooked that's filled out a form, or someone that would like to address the council about this particular item? If not, then we'll move on and have Mr. Blows address us from the COE's perspective, from the management.
Don Blows, three oh one South Richmond Road, Yukon. Like the city, Spanish Cove Board of Trustees has has done some extensive planning to take a look at where we are now and where we need to be down the road. We want to make sure we remain a viable community for retired persons. The Board of Trustees recognized that healthy institutions need to reposition themselves from time to time in order to stay attractive and competitive. Our board has performed due diligence to ensure that a proper process was followed to develop a business plan and conceptual design. Since Spanish Cove is a public trust, with the city of Yukon the beneficiary, we are required by state law to have the city's authorization before we take on any debt. And as was mentioned, you know, that debt that we're asking for is a cap of forty-two million dollars for the purpose of expanding our health center as well as for the development of a new independent living and community center on our grounds. There will always be risks for anything that we do. There's a risk to the city. There's a risk to Spanish Cove. Yet we feel comfortable that our plan is solid and is in the best interest of Spanish Cove and its residents. We know that the senior population in Oklahoma will be doubling within the next fifteen years. We know that enhancing our infrastructure for senior services is critical and that the time is now to begin working toward that. We want to make sure that we're going to put our best foot forward. We greatly appreciate the city's partnership in the past and are thankful that you're taking this up on your agenda tonight. Thank you.
Yes, sir. All right. As far as with Mr. Blows, are there questions from from the council to Mr. Blows? Questions? Questions? I have, I have a few, and I don't know procedurally, because I want to ask the city attorney some, just some questions. So should we start our council discussion and then so you want to start with council discussion, and then I can ask you questions? May I ask Mr. Blows also during that time? Then let's start. Let's just go down. We'll just go from one end, and then I'll be last, I guess. So Councilwoman Yanda, do you have some council discussion?
Well, I just feel like this expansion is vital to Spanish Cove to provide the life care services that the residents have invested in and to attract future residents. Spanish Cove has been an excellent, had an excellent reputation in Yukon for over forty-one years, and I think that it will continue with this change of expansion and growth.
Councilwoman Smaestra.
Well, I also believe you don't go backwards in life. I think you should go forward, and I've believed in Yukon almost forty-four years. We've come a long way, and this would be no doubt a good thing to complete.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilman Russell.
Well, as some of you might know, I'm a local home builder, so I'm in construction. So I'm the first one that believes in bringing things up to date, adding on, making them appeal to the public. I'm all for what you're wanting to do, the improvements you're wanting to do. I just question the way you're going about it. I would a whole lot rather see you break this up in phases where you're not drawing, where you're not borrowing so much money at one time. You could get part of the phase done, get it finished, bring in new tenants, be having income coming in off of that, start the next phase. By all means, it all needs to be done, what you're saying, but my suggestion is to break this up into phases. You might want to bring this back in front of us again in three phases, would be my suggestion. That's all for me.
Mr. McCarron.
I don't have a lot. I mean, other than the fact that I, like most of the council, believe that you need to move forward with things. I've listened very carefully to a number of people. I've certainly spoken to several of you that are here tonight. And, you know, and I've been around Spanish Cove. I've had friends out there for, I don't know that all forty of the forty years that have been there, but probably thirty-nine have been in Yukon for forty-seven years. And I think you have to look forward in things as you go forward, not though all those decisions are easy. They certainly are not. I would encourage, and just as a general statement, and you know, Richard alluded to it too, is you know, all of the financing doesn't necessarily have to be immediate. I
Right.
You know, I realize that, but but I think, you know, the important issue here is, are you going to become a vital part of the community and stay that way? Or is there something in the future that's, you know, that's going to be taking you down like Willow Creek and the other things? So that's a comment for me, and I I assume that you've, you know, that the that the board at the Cove did, did support all of this. I didn't, I never saw the vote numbers or anything, but but it was supported, I assume, by the, by the board as well. Is that true?
It is true. It was authorized once and then reaffirmed six to one by the Board of Trustees.
Thank you. That's all for me.
Okay. What? Just some information. I, like the other council members, I've, I've spoken to many of the people in this room, and I've probably the two issues that are here before us tonight, this matter and the signal light, have probably brought about, this is my thirteenth year on the council, but they've probably brought about more interest than anything else, and I just unfortunately, I'm an attorney, so, and I, and I'm sorry for you, Don. I mean, we're friends, but I'm about to embark on some questions, but I want to just to clear up some points. I think it's important to, I mean, we've talked about being transparent and making sure that everything's there in the decisions that we make, so I want to share just us to share some information with everybody, maybe to clear up some points, and then we'll, we'll hold a vote. So Mike, may I ask just a couple of questions?
Sure.
I guess from the city attorney, can you explain the relationship that the city of Yukon has with Spanish Cove? And then vice versa, the relationship that Spanish Cove has, you know, we hear this Title sixty trust. What does that mean?
Well, what happened was the state legislature enacted legislation, and it's found in Title sixty of the Oklahoma statutes, and it starts like at section one seventy-six. And what that does is it creates public trusts. Public trusts in Oklahoma have, are not-for-profit. They don't make profits for any kind of shareholders or members of the association. They're formed for a public purpose. They have to have a beneficiary. And oftentimes, the beneficiary, a lot of public trusts, is the state of Oklahoma. The Yukon Municipal Authority is a Title sixty public trust as well, and the beneficiary of that is the city of Yukon. The beneficiary of the Spanish Cove trust, back when it was the teachers' trust, and now it's changed its name, of course, but the beneficiary continues to be the city of Yukon. So the city of Yukon does not have a lot of authority over the day-to-day activity of their public trusts, but they do have some kind of veto powers when it comes to who's going to be the trustees, who's going to sit on the Board of Trustees. I believe we have actually, the city council has an appointment on the board itself, and Larry Taylor's been there forever. A lot of local business people sit on the board, people with a sense of community and that have been around for a long time. So the council would have veto power basically over trustees. The Board of Trustees brings to the city council a suggestion, a nominee for trustee, but the city council doesn't pick the trustee, just simply veto power. By the same token, the city of Yukon being the beneficiary of the trust, if the trust were ever dissolved because the members of the, of the, of the public trust can't gain financially from the trust, they have to have a beneficiary. So were this Cove to dissolve the trust, after satisfaction of all of the debt, any of the assets left over would go to the beneficiary, and that would be the city of Yukon. City of Yukon, being the beneficiary of the trust as well, has the ability to veto or authorize a borrowing, kind of an oversight to make sure that these public trusts, these authorities, don't get in too deep, so to speak. And it's the job of the city, then the council, to have this oversight over these long-term borrowings. I don't know where else to go with that. I mean, if you have specific questions, I certainly can. The borrowings of the Cove, the borrowings of the public trust never, ever become the obligation of the city. They are not the beneficiary's obligation, so if the trust goes under and it goes bankrupt and the sale of the assets results in payment of the creditors, and there's still a two-million-dollar deficit, the city's not on the hook for that. The beneficiaries are not on the hook for the debt in the event of some type type of dissolution or liquidation. Simply an oversight.
I think that took care of all my questions. Most importantly, I, I think that one concern that was brought to me was, is that the, if the Cove failed in this, that the city ultimately would be responsible for the debt. That's not true.
No, sir.
As far as the lending documents, will the city be required to sign on those documents?
We just sign the authorization in the form of the resolution authorizing the indebtedness. The city is not incurring any debt.
So that signature will not obligate us in any way?
No, sir.
Which I assume will be my signature, I hope. I believe that's it.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Blows, just, and some points of clarification here. I've been told, it's been brought to me that, that during this process, that some of the residents were told that the board does not represent the members of the Cove, that they represent the Cove itself, the entity. Can you comment on that?
The Board of Trustees, I mean, responsibility of a trustee is to represent the trust. The trust is Spanish Cove Housing Authority. And by, the foremost obligation is to make sure we're financially responsible and have intec, financial integrity. So by looking out for for the trust, we are, they are in fact looking out for the residents.
Okay. But in this process, as far as the voice of the people or the voice of the residents at the Cove, has there been a person that was a representative of the cumulative body that spoke about what the people wanted in this process?
We have seven trustees. We have three trustees that are actually residents of Spanish Cove. I think one of their hardest responsibilities by far is, you know, when we look each year at our budget and obligations, you know, they indeed have to vote themselves a rate increase. But, but we have, you know, certainly, we try to be transparent as we can. We listen, we respond to town hall, we listen to our residents. I mean, it's, it's a good process, John. It's an open process. It's just sort of like the city council. You know, if your citizens voted for increases in water or sewage, I mean, you would
They don't get the chance. They wouldn't vote for it, trust me. But, I mean, here's, here's my point. There's not a, there's not a person on the board whose responsibility is to advocate solely for what the residents want. Because their position, they, they're advocating for the trust.
They advocate for the trust. That's their responsibility.
Regarding the proposal, what process was used to select the current company that will be handling this project?
We, we accepted proposals from several different companies, at least three. We, we contacted people. This is a limited field, you know, senior living, development of senior living communities. So we used the references given to us by Leading Age Oklahoma, Mary Brinkley, the executive director. We also talked to some folks that have some experience, Ziegler Financial Group. We got a list of, of companies. We inquired of those companies. We actually had three that wanted to come out and do a site visit, and they did, and those three companies submitted proposals.
So in essence, was there a bid process?
Yes.
Okay, and then the, and remind me the name of the company that was chosen.
We chose a group, ARI, and I don't remember what ARI stands for. I just call them ARI.
Thank you.
And EUA. ARI is the financial group that helped us with the, the business plan. You know, anytime we want to, anytime we do planning, we want to make sure there's a solid business case for what it is that we're we're seeking, to make sure it's financially sound. And then Architect Group was EUA, and they're Epstein, Uhen, and Associates. And they're out of Wisconsin.
Mr. Russell brought up the point of, or the idea of maybe staging the project, and I know Mr. Nelson's here this evening, and I've met with him a couple of times about Mr. Russell talked about maybe a three, three-stage project. Mr. Nelson had proposed a two-stage project. Has the, has ARI, or the group as a whole, have they evaluated, for instance, Mr. Nelson's project or the idea of making this a two-stage or a three-stage project rather than doing the entire project all at one time?
We had a planning committee that addressed goals and expectations right up front for strategic planning. Indeed, we looked at several different options. We looked at, at just building the extension for the health center and then stopping. But that did not meet the goals and expectations. That would just help make us a nursing center. If we stopped there, I think the planning committee and the board felt that there would be not much gain for the people that lived at Spanish Cove, and that was part of the aim, too, is to improve their amenities as well. It is an incremental plan, Councilman Russell. It is, the first phase would be to, to first phase, of course, is design. We haven't even gone into design phase. We're just at conceptual design and having the business case put together. First phase would be, after design, would be construction of the health center, and that would be extending on the, to the north on both the east and west wings of Spanish Cove. We would add space, two stories there, plus a, a basement. With that said, the second phase would be the development of the community center and a four-story independent living center, which would have fifty brand-new apartments. To get there, we, of course, will To get there, we, of course, will have to, to remove some buildings from Spanish Cove. We don't have a lot of green space or a lot of room to grow, so, so we would be raising some 40-plus-year-old buildings. To construct that, there are, there are risks, of course, and that we have a mitigation plan before we move forward. Part of that plan is to make sure we have enough pre-sales, and as we mentioned in the special study session last month, we want to have 75% pre-sold and a 10% deposit collected from that pre-sales. So, yeah, if we do not receive that, then that's a natural stop, for sure. We want to make sure this is financially viable to move forward. So, two phases, two buildings. First is the health center, second is the community centers and independent living space.
So, just to clarify, so, phase one, the expansion and the renovation of the pavilion, once that's finished, you will not start phase two until you have...
75% pre-sales.
Occupancy.
Pre-sales, yeah, for the new building. So, that's 50, 50 apartments, 75% of those we want to make sure we have. We're going to have a marketing program in place to be working for a period of 12 to 18 months to make sure that we have reached that mark. If we don't, then we'll either have to cease or figure out an alternative plan.
Is there an alternate, is there a contingency plan now, or will it, that will be discussed at the time?
That will be discussed at the time, right.
One of the concerns, I think, that was brought up by Mr. Tony and several of the people that I've discussed is a potential, the continuation of, of the rate increases.
Right.
And it would seem, common sense would tell me, while this construction is going on, that that might create a dip in the people that are wanting to move into Spanish Cove. Maybe it will, maybe it won't. But, is it likely that rates will continue to rise as this project goes on? Because, I guess I want to, maybe I should have prefaced it, it's my understanding that the purpose of this project, or one of these, one of the main purposes, obviously to provide, but the other is to, to stop this increase that goes on every year.
Right. It's not to stop, it is to slow it down. You know, the goal is to slow it down to the rate of inflation somewhere in that neighborhood. Every, every one of us sees increases in our home mortgage or, or the, the costs for living in our houses. Spanish Cove is the same. What we're trying to do is hold that down to a reasonable level. For the past 25 years, the average annual rate increase at Spanish Cove has been near 5% per year. So, one of the assumptions that we've made in our planning process is to hold that down to 3% or to the rate of inflation, the cost of services and goods that we're going to see increase over time. So, with that, that is relief, and as Mr. Tony said, you know, he's only seen two years of 3% rate increase. This year that we're in now, our fiscal year began September 1, we held it down to 3% in good faith. We want to move that direction. We also see, you know, the revenue cycle is positive in our business case, very, very positive. We see our financial assets building over time with, with new entry fees with, from independent living, as well as from revenue that can be generated through skilled nursing services. We just got our skilled nursing certification this past year, just a little over a year ago. We first served our first patient in August. We have limited space. It's good money for Spanish Cove, it's a good offset for the residents. We know there's a great market out there, we have high-quality care, there are lots of people that would want to come to Spanish Cove. And, but the problem or issue for us is that our residents come first, we're obligated to our residents, so we have limited number of beds that we could actually out for, for skilled nursing unless they're our residents. So, there's a good opportunity for us, and that's part of the plan, too, is to expand on our, our nursing capabilities.
Okay. But some of the people that have spoken to me, they said, "Well, John, it, it makes sense that we get our cost of living issue and, and the operation of, of the Cove under control before we move off into borrowing $42 million." I mean, with the, with the money that we have at stake right now, if it's 5% a year, what is it going to be when you put $42 million in the management and the service of that on top of that? So, was that considered, explain to me and help us...
Well, let me just state that the $42 million is the maximum cap that this repositioning would cost. That has all kinds of contingencies built in, that has owner contingency, that has escalation for construction. We do not anticipate borrowing $42 million upfront. It's a construction note, more or less. We borrow as we need to. If there are areas that we can operationalize, if things are going well, this is a conservative business plan that we looked at and the board approved. But the Board of Trustees felt that, you know, if there are, if the income comes in, if the, if it's too conservative and, and things are better and our occupancy is better or we're doing better with our, with our health services, we certainly want to borrow less.
And maybe this isn't practical, and we've shared some emails back and forth, and so you all know, I mean, I've shared a lot of my ideas so Don could be prepared tonight so we could have this exchange, but one concern of mine is, is I, I've done the math, and it, it appears to me that the average person out there, average couple is paying about $4,000 a month, ballpark, to live there. At, at 5% in three years, that's a $630 cost of living increase. I think that anyone in here not living at Spanish Cove would have a heart attack if their mortgage or their cost of living had, had gone up at that rate. And at the same time, a concern of mine is, is, so I, I did like anybody else, I Googled it, okay, so I Googled cost of living, and I'm sure you have, too. The national cost of living for 2014 was 1.7, 2013 1.7, 2012 3.6, 2010 1.7, and 2011, it was zero. At the same time, Spanish Cove's was 5% until this year, where it was 3%. So, they're up 23% at Spanish Cove.
That may be the national figures for national average across the board, but health services has a different inflation rate.
And what are those?
The last one that I looked at was 6.5% for the year. I know food costs go up every year. I mean, these are things that most families experience. The great news right now is the gas prices are down, so, but, but, but we're talking about a life care community primarily, you know, service-oriented, health service-oriented, and that's where most of the expense is.
But, Don, if, if the rate continues to go in 10 years, the people that are paying $4,000 a month right now will be paying $8,000 a month. And, you know, not long ago, there was an issue where there was a pill, and it went from like $25 to $750. I mean, that was a big thing on the news. It, it doesn't affect the people that can afford it. What it does is it affects the people that can't afford it. Agree?
No, I, my, my desire for Spanish Cove residents is that we limit the rate increases. When I came on board over three years ago, that's the thing I heard the most, you know, what can we do to slow down the rate of increase? So, we started looking at opportunities. We know skilled, skilled nursing services is an opportunity to bring in extra income, and we are bringing extra income in. We, we grossed over $500,000 for our first year, which about 50% of it was profit for Spanish Cove. So, but unfortunately, we're limited in what we can do. I'd like, I'd love to do that, I'd love to hold rates down, I want to hold rates down. I believe this plan is a good plan. It assumes a 3% per year over the project's entirety to the next 10 or more years. That's awesome. If we can do less, we would do less.
Okay, so, here goes the lawyer in me.
Okay.
So, what you're telling these people here tonight is, is for the next, however many years this project will take, they can expect a 3% or less cost of living increase?
The expectation or the assumption is that it would be 3%.
Now, you're being a lawyer back.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm not a lawyer, John, and you know that.
No, I understand, and I, and I don't, again, but those are, those are the concerns that the people have expressed with me, is that they've experienced this 5% year after year after year.
I, I'm with them, and I'm with these, I'm with everybody at Spanish Cove.
And it's odd that it, it looks like the room's divided, and, but I want everyone in here to understand one thing, I don't think anyone is opposed to improving Spanish Cove. There's not anyone here that's opposed to that. I've not talked to one person that says that this project shouldn't take place. The question is, how should it take place, and the effect, the economic impact that it's going to have on the other people? So, that's why I've gone through and, and...
Well, and that's, and that's why we're asking for a cap. We're not asking to borrow $42 million, we're asking for a lid. You know, that's the, the conservative estimate, or the liberal estimate, perhaps, for costs, that's, that's the top amount. We know there are built-in contingencies in that. We know there are areas that we can operationalize, some of these, some of these softer costs. The actual hard construction cost is about 27 million, but we have, it's an incremental plan with, with, with stop or cessation components built in. If we don't reach the goal, then we, we don't move further without figuring out another way to do it, and perhaps that means coming back to talk to you, I don't know. But, but I know that's what we've got, and we've got a great plan.
Okay. Well, I, I think that'll conclude my questions. I mean, my, my comments, I mean, I want to give you, Don, a chance also, if you have anything after I've asked those questions, do you have anything else you'd like to say?
I would.
Okay, go ahead. Do you have a question?
Yeah. Clear up again with me on this before the teardown takes place and starting the whole new...
Right, before we start construction of the second building, you know, we will have worked to, to pre-sell 75% of the new, of the 50 new apartments. And so, that's, you know, if we're, if we're not there, then we slow down until we do, or we come up with an alternative plan. The pre-sale requires a 10% deposit on the entry fee. So, I mean, that's built into this.
Questions? Don, do you have something else you'd like to say?
Yeah, I just want to reiterate, and I'm sorry if I'm repeating this, but, you know, we use experts, consultants, to help guide us through. They have, the groups that we use have more than 20 years' experience nationally. They have helped many retirement communities. And I don't know of one project that hasn't been successful, that hasn't built the cash reserves that they marked out upfront, you know, that put a pretty good guess. They are consultants, the board hired these consultants, we listened to them, they helped guide us through the process, and we have an excellent plan. Many of the ideas that have been pitched in this alternative plan that you may have received a copy of are ideas that were considered in the planning committee, but the board chose to move with the, the plan that was adopted by the planning committee. Some of the folks that speak against this project were, were part of that planning group. So, but it is in the best interest for Spanish Cove to move forward. We have been delayed already, we're ready to get going. I would greatly appreciate your vote tonight for this. We're going to do our best for the residents, we're going to borrow the lowest amount that we need to, but we need to get the project done, we need to get started, and of course, our next phase is with, with design. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, council members.
My personal comments are that I, I am not opposed to the project. I'm opposed to the way the project is set up at this time, and I would like to see more, I've heard more tonight, and, and I feel better about the project, but what I'm concerned about are the, the economic impact, the potential economic impact that it might have on some of the residents. I would like to, I, I feel good about the 3%, I, I'm glad, glad to hear that, but what I'm worried about is the potential that if the project does not go well for some reason or not, that the rest of the community would have to subsidize. And that's, that's a problem that I have, is, is that if there's a 20% increase over five years, or over four years, 25 over five, that is a tremendous increase, I think, is, and I understand a national average of being 6%, but we live in Oklahoma, and our costs are, are much lower than that, and I, I, with all due respect, I don't think that our costs are that high, and maybe I'm wrong. So, those are my concerns, I appreciate everyone coming this evening. There's going to be a vote, and it's going to go one way or the other, but I hope when you all leave, that you return to the community that you live in. You didn't, there wasn't an aisle down that middle of that community when you came here, and there ought to not be an aisle down that mid, middle of that community when you go home. And I don't mean to lecture you, but you live in a great place, you live in a, Rick Obitz isn't here tonight to yell about how great Yukon is, but if he were, he'd give you a big yee-haw right now. You live in a great place, and it's going to continue to be a great place regardless and in spite of what we decide to do tonight. We're going to go forward, and Spanish Cove will continue to thrive and be a vital part of this community, and I truly believe that. So, call the roll, please.
McCarran?
Yes.
Alberts?
No.
Russell?
No.
Yanda?
Yes.
Smystrel?
Yes.
Congratulations.
All right, we're about to proceed to the rest of our agenda, and it certainly would not bother us if, if we'll pause for a minute. I know you all are dying to sit and listen to the rest of it, and you're certainly welcome to, I don't want you to think that we want you to leave, but there's some people that are standing in the back that certainly might be able to use the seats for some of the upcoming issues, so if you want to excuse yourselves now, please take a moment to do so. Thank you so much for coming tonight and taking your time and sharing with us all this information, thank you very much.
I lost my... Yes, ma'am. Well, thank you, ma'am, thank you very much.
I don't want to be divided.
I thought you had it.
Oh, my gosh. I know that they turned it down.
What do you think it would have been?
Well, I know, and that's, you know, one of my subjects.
Want me to get Cooper to...
First of all, Tim Holt, from, what is it, back, he sits on the floor. And that's the question I was...
No, sir.
I, I don't know how to answer on that. I haven't been on long enough to answer that question, I probably need to ask the city attorney down there, Mike Stee, I can introduce you to him.
Yes, sir, and I was mistaken.
Leon?
Okay, guys.
I want you to know sincerely, you gotta get on, get a minute with me, I know, I know I do.
Thanks, Don, good to see you.
Order, please, order.
We could breathe them, bring the meeting back to order, we need to continue with our next items on the agenda. We're going to flip items number four and five, we're going to take out item number five first, and that's to consider a discussion, possible action regarding the traffic signal located at Andrew Drive, Garth Brooks Boulevard, that's item number five, that will be the next one we would consider. Do I have a motion, please?
So moved?
Yes.
A second?
Yeah, what are you voting on?
Well, I thought you were going to bring this item, okay, I'm sorry. So, this, just consideration and discussion. All right, at this time, we will consider and discuss a possible motion, said action, so we need a motion. So, we'll open the floor for discussion right now, and let's just go like we did a minute ago, we'll go from...
I'm not really sure, did we take up item number four?
We flipped item four and five.
Oh, four and five, so you're going to discuss and consider some action on the traffic light?
Yes.
Before you talk about the...
The study.
The study.
Yes.
Okay, so you would need some kind of affirmative motion on the table before you enter discussion.
Okay.
And that would be not just regarding the traffic light, but whether restoring the traffic light or leaving it like, the motion would be, leave it like it is with the canvas, the bags over it for a while until we can, but there needs to be some motion.
Okay.
Okay.
Councilwoman Yanda?
I make a motion to repair and reactivate the light at Garth Brooks and Andrews Drive while further studies are being done to determine an alternate and acceptable solution.
Second.
Second.
Okay, discussion?
Number four.
Discussion?
Yeah, I think it's important that we, you know, we've certainly beat this to death, I think, but it looks, it certainly appears to me that it's appropriate time for us to go back and, and, you know, certainly look at that and put, take the hoods off and turn the light back on for...
If we could breathe them, bring the meeting back to order. We need to continue with our next items on the agenda. We're gonna flip items number four and five. We're gonna take out item number five first, and that's to consider discussion, possible action regarding the traffic signal located at Andrew Drive, Garth Brooks Boulevard. That's item number five. That will be the next one we would consider. Do I have a motion, please?
So moved?
Yes.
A second?
What are you voting on?
Yeah, what are you voting on?
Well, I thought you were gonna bring this item, okay, I'm sorry. So, this is just consideration and discussion. All right, at this time, we will consider and discuss a possible motion, said action, so we need a motion. So, we'll open the floor for discussion right now. Uh, let's just go like we did a minute ago. We'll go from-
I'm not really sure, did we take up item number four?
We flipped item four and five.
Oh, four and five. So, you're gonna discuss and consider some action on the traffic light-
Yes.
Before you talk about the-
The study.
The study.
Yes.
So, you would need some kind of affirmative motion on the table before you enter discussion.
Okay.
And that would be not just regarding the traffic light, but whether restoring the traffic light or leaving it like, the motion would be, leave it like it is with the canvas, the bags over it for a while until we can, but there needs to be some motion.
Okay. Councilwoman Yanda?
I make a motion to repair and reactivate the light at Garth Brooks and Andrews Drive while further studies are being done to determine an alternate and acceptable solution.
Second.
Second.
Okay, discussion? Discussion?
Yeah, I think it's important that we, you know, we've certainly beat this to death, I think. But it looks, it certainly appears to me that it's appropriate time for us to go back and, you know, certainly look at that and put, take the hoods off and turn the light back on for some period of time until we get through, uh, looking at the final analysis and the counts and everything that we've got before. So, that's my take on that.
Absolutely, that's, uh-
Mr. Russell?
Absolutely.
Move on, let's just move on.
Okay, I agree as well. So, with that being said, there are people that are here this evening that had come to address the council over the light. You've heard the pending motion. With that motion, is there anyone here that would still like to address the council? You could talk us out of it, ma'am, go ahead. I'm just teasing, go ahead.
Jenny Crane.
Yes, ma'am.
Fifteen hundred Somerton Place.
Yes, ma'am.
I was just wanting to clarify, is this a temporary-
Yes, ma'am.
-movement that you're doing? Or is this, do we still need to fight to keep it or find a different recommendation for it?
Mr. Clerk, would you reread the motion?
I'm gonna defer to Ms. Yanda to read it from her notes instead.
I make a motion to repair and reactivate the light at Garth Brooks and Andrews Drive while further studies are being done to determine an alternate and acceptable solution.
Thank you.
Any other persons that are here? I don't want to, so, you're Kathy, Ms. Williams, is that you?
I'm-
Ms. Williams, Kathy Williams.
I'm Kathy Williams.
Is there anything you'd like to say? Ma'am, if you're gonna, you have to come to the podium. Don't mean, I apologize, but state your name, your address.
Kathy Williams, eight oh eight Woodlawn Drive, Yukon, Oklahoma.
Yes, ma'am.
My question is, will you let us know when you're gonna determine to look at it again as far as bagging the light or doing something with it? In other words, when are we gonna find out about the study?
Mr. Bottom?
The, as soon as the engineering studies are complete concerning the alternative improvements throughout the corridor and the entire area, all the way from Cornwell to Garth Brooks, moving on to Frisco Drive, as well as from Northwest Tenth North to Vandement. Uh, once that is completed, we'll be presenting that to council at several opportunities. It will be published. It's on our website, it's on our TV channel, it's-
Okay, I just, notification, and that's great, okay.
But, Mr. Bottom, it's an item, anything that will involve changing those intersections, the lanes, the signal lights, those-
They all have budgetary consequences, and those budgetary consequences are certainly above my spending authority, so they have to come for your consideration.
And it's my understanding, we, this city engineer shared with us this evening, the presentation, I guess, that was given at the Traffic Commission. Were you present at the Traffic Commission?
Yes.
And the presentation regarding the traffic flow, et cetera. We had an opportunity to see that this evening, 'cause I'd ask if it had been presented, and he said that it had. So, as you can see, there's a whole-
Right.
It's not just the stoplight at Andrew Drive, but the whole community, and that is certainly an issue as we grow. We're very, I wished I would've said it before, by the way. I happen to be friends with the person who owns Hideaway, or anyway, apart. We, it's the highest grossing store in the state of Oklahoma on opening day by three hundred dollars. So, I wish I'd've said that to everybody. But my point is, is as we continue to grow, there'll be things like that that we need to take care of and address. But yes, ma'am, I mean, it's, that's why I ask all those questions. It's very important, there's not a person on here that does not want to make sure that everyone in this community understands what's going on here.
Okay.
And you and I have exchanged plenty of emails, and I hope you know that you have access to me, and I'm certain that everyone here is happy to exchange and continue to work as, with you all as we continue to address the traffic issue, um, out by Andrew Drive, Walmart, Target, et cetera.
It's helped us.
Yes, ma'am.
Your responses.
Well-
You know, because we felt like we've been in the dark on a lot of stuff.
Well, it's important to ask questions-
It was like the part, you know, when we're told there's no part, we don't have the part, and then we find out, you know.
I think Mr. Sigler's-
I won't even go back into that, but you know, it's a trouble-
Mr. Sigler's gonna get on you and I about having a conversation during a meeting, so, but thank you for your comments.
Sure, thank you.
Any other, it's not a tight, let's have a conversation after the meeting. If anyone has any additional questions, we're prepared to vote. If someone has something to say that would influence our vote, please come forward. Otherwise, let's, yes, ma'am?
Fran Britton, six twenty-four St. James Place. Interestingly enough, a lot of the things that have happened during the time the light has been bagged has nothing to do with Yukon itself, but they've all been reported in the news. The real estate section of the Oklahoman had an article about the ten fastest-growing housing areas, and Yukon was number ten and had the longest time on the market. And they say late in the article, Yukon's high days on the market do stand out. What's the deal, Yukon? Today's paper talks about, on the business section, downtown land sales. It's talking about new developments downtown and midtown. Says, but questions remain as to whether such ambitions will be put on hold by continued uncertainty in the energy industry. The October first article about Oklahoma ranks last in second-quarter personal income growth. It makes me wonder, when we talk about our big expansion at Frisco Ridge and the Sports Complex and all those kinds of things, if we're not doing the old grabbing for a bird in the bush rather than keeping trust of the people that are the bird in the hand. Yes, maybe we'll get these new big shopping centers. It'll have to speed things up so that people can get out to the new shopping centers. But in the meantime, those of us who live here and used to shop right over at Baum's, for instance, are in a hard, in a bad way. So, please don't think that we can just say, oh, there's going to be wonderful growth that's going to make this traffic light not even necessary and, or not believable or important in two or three or five years. And don't punish us right now for what might or might not happen in the future. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Call the roll, please.
Russell?
Yes.
Smystrela?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Next item is item number four, and that's consider accepting the traffic signal warrant analysis final report from, on Garth Brooks Boulevard at Andrew, from Lee Engineering. Do I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
Grayson, by accepting this, does that obligate us to the findings? Or just, we're just accepting the report?
You've just read it, and you accept it. You do not approve of it.
Okay.
You're accepting it, that's it.
Okay, thank you.
Is that so, we can pay for it as well?
It's already been paid for, by the way.
Okay.
So, what's the impact of accepting the report?
Nothing. It just simply lets Joe have some numbers and information as he moves forward on all of his planning from this point forward.
Okay, and that information's helpful as you plan and move forward? Okay. Other discussion? Discussion? Call the roll, please.
Yanda?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Smystrela?
Yes.
The next item on the agenda is item six, and that's consider accepting the permanent utility easement to serve Bounce Academy located at nineteen oh one West Vandement as recommended by Development Services, by, excuse me, the Development Services Director. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Discussion? Call the roll, please.
Smystrela?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
Item seven is consider accepting the permanent utility easement to River Mesa Two, a tract of land situated within a portion of the northeast quarter of Section sixteen Township twelve north, range five west of the Indian Meridian in Yukon Canadian County, Oklahoma, as recommended by the Development Director. Do I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Discussion? Call the roll, please.
McCarron?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
Smystrela?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
Item eight is consider accepting the irrevocable letter of credit in an amount of seven hundred and fifty-nine thousand, five hundred and nineteen dollars and seven cents for improvements of sanitary service, sanitary sewer, public water line, and paving and drainage to River Mesa Two as recommended by the Development Services Director.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Discussion? Call the roll, please.
Yanda?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
Smystrela?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Item nine is consider accepting ordinance number one three two five and ordinance amending ordinance number six five seven, Appendix A of the Code of the City of Yukon, Oklahoma, by providing that zoning designation for lots five, six, and seven in the Block Two of Harris Acres, five hundred East Main, in addition to the City of Yukon, Canadian County, Oklahoma, to be changed from C five automotive and commercial to C three restricted commercial and declaring an emergency. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Discussion? Call the roll, please.
Smystrela?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Item nine is consider approving the emergency.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Discussion? Call the roll, please.
McCarron?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Smystrela?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes. Item ten is consider accepting ordinance number one three two six as an ordinance amending ordinance number six five seven, Appendix A of the Code of the City of Yukon, Oklahoma, by providing that the zoning designation for part of the northeast quarter, Section Nor, I mean, sorry, part of the northeast quarter of Section twenty Township twelve north, range five west of the Indian Meridian, Canadian County, Oklahoma, ten west main, be changed from C two to C three and declaring the emergency.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Discussion? Call the roll, please.
Russell?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
Smystrela?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes. Item ten A is consider approving the emergency. Do I have a motion?
Yes. So moved. Second.
Discussion? Discussion? Call the roll, please.
Alberts?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Smystrela?
Yes.
Item eleven is consider approving an expenditure of funds in an amount not to exceed sixty-four thousand, two hundred and forty-seven dollars and twenty-nine cents for the construction and improvement of a sidewalk from north of Yukon Middle School to Walgreens on Vandement Avenue, as well as an addition of ADA improvements to the sidewalk near Saint John's Catholic Church as recommended by the Development Director.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion?
Yeah, I'll just make a comment on that. I think that's something that's really important that's gonna happen. That's been nothing but a mud track yard for a long time, and I think it's been a safety problem for a while, and I'm delighted to see we're moving forward with it.
Ladies? Call the roll, please.
Alberts?
Yes.
Smystrela?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Item twelve is consider approving Resolution two thousand and fifteen dash twenty, a resolution declaring and setting operational fees for roll-off sanitation and disposal services are recommended by the sanitation director.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Discussion? Call the roll, please.
Smystrela?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Item thirteen is the city manager's report.
Very quickly, Friday, October the fifteenth, that's Friday, October the fifteenth, uh, at the City Park Football Field behind the Community Center, North Community Center, uh, is our City of Yukon Tree Giveaway. We normally have this, every now and then, we don't have any trees that are given to us, but we do this year. Be there early, or there won't be any trees left. And I, I'm, they don't, they normally don't make thirty minutes. So, if you want a new tree, go to the park on the evening of October the fifteenth, five thirty. You might want to be there at five and get you a new tree. Also, the annual Halloween movie at the Jackie Cooper Gym, uh, will be held, uh, let's see, that is Ghostbusters is, will also be on Friday night, October the fifteenth. That's at the Jackie Cooper Gym. Go see Ghostbusters. It's unbelievable how old that movie is. Saturday, October the twenty-fourth, uh, October the twenty-fourth is Spooksville, uh, Yukon Community Center. Uh, it's from three to six P.M. is the carnival hours. Admission is three dollars per child. They can also bring their parents if they wish and go attend Spooksville that evening. Also, on Monday, October the twenty-sixth, is the Mummy and Son Masquerade. Uh, that's at the Jackie Cooper Gym, six to eight P.M. It's for boys four to, twelve years old and their mummies. Also, on Tuesday, the twenty-seventh, is Spooky Senior Social at the Dale Robertson Center from five thirty to seven thirty. Three dollars a person at the Dale Robertson Center. The last thing I have this evening, Mayor, I want to tell you of an ordinance that you will be, uh, looking at, uh, in, at the next meeting. If you'll remember, three years ago, we passed an ordinance that, uh, utility rates go up by the CPI, uh, every year. This year, the increase is point three percent. Uh, so, uh, we also, at that time, passed an ordinance concerning sewer rates, because we wanted to unbuckle the sewer rates from the water rates. Uh, it called for an increase of those rates at twenty percent a year for five years, and then the CPI thereafter in order to equalize the water and sewer revenues. Uh, the sewer rate ordinance revision that we will be bringing to council at the next meeting calls for you to suspend the twenty percent increase. Uh, no more twenty percent increases, only the CPI. It also does away with the dual sewer charges. The winter rate at six dollars and twenty-eight cents per thousand gallons, uh, that, uh, and then a three dollar and fifty-something cent rate during the summer. We'll go to one rate. It'll be that for all year. It'll be, have stratas, uh, depending on the total consumption that you, that you're there for. It is going to be a substantial decrease from the rate that you pay in the winters now. It will be an increase from the rate that you pay in the summer. So, it'll be at about in the middle, and it'll be one rate all year long. That is coming up at the next meeting.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for the manager? Questions for the manager? New business? Council discussion, Councilwoman Yanda.
Well, quickly, I just want to say thank you to our fire department for the services they provide, and then also to Charlotte Novak for her many years of service on the library board, and then also to Larry Taylor for his service on the planning commission. Thank you.
Councilwoman Smystrela?
Yes, check day was wonderful, and I think everybody was safe. We had a lot of policemen out there and a lot of people from all over the place,
We had a lot of policemen out there, and a lot of people from all over the place, and it was a wonderful day, even the weather was good, so.
Five total calls the entire day, needing the services of our police department and our fire department. One of those was a stroke that occurred right out in front of City Hall. So, wonderful, wonderful response, and a great, great event.
Councilman McCarron?
I just want to say thank you. I know most of the people have left, but thank you to all of those who came tonight from Spanish Cove, and folks that came to see about the light over on Andrew Drive. I think it's very important that people get the opportunity and have the right to come up and speak, and have action taken in their behalf, sometimes one way or the other, but at least it's an opportunity for us. And to see the folks here tonight really did my heart a lot of good to see them. I also wanted to comment on the award that you gave to Terry Peak tonight, Grayson. I thought that was a very good thing. Appreciated that a lot. Once again, for even the folks who came tonight who were not really happy about things, I, you know, I really commend them for coming as well. Once again, just a note to Chief Cornet for his firefighters that were recognized tonight, and also, I was at the, at the, sorry, Chief. Chief Jones. I was just about to say, and Chief Cornet, because of check day. Check day went extremely well. I was, I was very pleased. I was downtown and saw nothing but good things, and I'll apologize to Chief Jones tomorrow. But, anyway, I just think, you know, we do live in a wonderful place. Yukon is a great place to live, and, you know, let's, hopeful good things will continue to happen. Mayor?
Councilman Russell?
I also would like to thank Chief Cornet, because like I said, the, everyone said the check parade went off real smooth, so thank you all for your hard work. Also, I would like to, I realize everybody's gone, but I really appreciate everybody coming tonight. That's the reason we're here. If you all don't come and speak your voice, we don't know it. That's all for me.
Thank you. Well, time has flown tonight, it's 8:30, and time has flown since I've been on this council, and I don't know how long ago, it was 12 or 13 years ago that I signed up